Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council today, Tuesday, November 15th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you all for joining us this evening. We've got a pretty packed agenda tonight, so we'll jump right in with Mayor's minutes and comments from the council.
I just, of course, as you can tell, the weather's getting a little cooler. Remind people that there's a lot of holiday events coming up in our downtown. Next Monday is our Downtown Open House. Saturday after Thanksgiving is, of course, Small Business Saturday, and encourage people to support our businesses. And then the following Monday, the Monday after Thanksgiving, will be the annual Christmas tree lighting, and then later that week will be the Christmas parade. So we're getting up on the holidays very quickly.
A lot of events coming up, for sure.
I don't have specifically a council comment, but I am going to jump forward to the agenda adoption because we need to make some changes to the order.
Ford Stark Council, let the record reflect that Becky Neve is on the telephone, and she...can you hear us, Becky?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so it's needed to change the order of the agenda tonight. So immediately following City Manager's comments, I move that we approve the agenda with the City Manager's comments, followed by closed session, followed by matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. The reason for this is we have someone who is time-sensitive calling in for one of our closed sessions. That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt our agenda with the changes noted in the order. If there's no discussion, then Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Neve?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. And we somewhat skipped over City Manager comments, but are there any comments this evening?
Yeah, I do want to make one comment. This employee will probably get mad at me for bringing it out, but I think it's worth noting, a couple of weeks ago, we had an employee who was in the midst of a heart attack while at work, and David McConnell, one of our fleet maintenance manager, recognized the signs of what was going on and insisted that he call an ambulance and get him help immediately. And if it wasn't for David, I can probably say pretty certain that the employee that was having the heart attack would not be here. So hats off to David for everything that he did to save an employee's life, and then, you know, our thoughts and prayers are with the employee while he's undergoing recuperation.
Absolutely. Thank you. So we'll move right into the closed session, which is E1, Closed Session pursuant to Section 2.2 hyphen 3711 point A7 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Legal, City of Bristol, Virginia v. BVU. And Closed Session pursuant to Section 2.2 hyphen 3711 point A8 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. October 25th, 2022, City Council Agenda Item. Is there a motion from council to go into closed session?
I move we enter into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
A motion and a second, so Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Neve?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene in executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Neve?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Okay, so now we'll move on to matters to be presented by members of the public, public comment for non-agenda items. For those who may not know, just a quick refresher, I'll call your name, and you can come up to the podium if you'll state your name and your address for the record. Everyone has three minutes to speak, and when the yellow light comes on, it means your time is just about up, and when the red light comes on, it means your time is up. So we appreciate you coming, and we ask you to please be courteous of your time and each other's. The first person who signed up is Ms. Stephanie Rosenwing.
Hi. My name's Stephanie Rosenwing. I live at 934 Piedmont. I work at Bristol Women's Health at 2603 Osborne Street, Bristol, Virginia. I'm a mother, grandmother, wife, sister, and a Gulf War veteran. I'm a veteran. But the most important thing that defines me as a human being is my very rich Appalachian heritage. It has always influenced my behavior, my morals, and my decisions. I come from a very long line of hard-working coal miners and veterans. I'm extraordinarily proud of my service to this once-great nation and the activism that it has inspired. On October 25th, I attended this council's last meeting, where the resolution to declare Bristol a sanctuary city for the unborn was proposed. And of this five-person council, four of you are men. I just have to say that abortion is most definitely a man's issue, not just that of a woman. Women are often accused of being irresponsible or promiscuous. Men and their contribution to unwanted accidental or forced pregnancies are frequently overlooked or excused. Men are most definitely the number-one cause of abortion in America through irresponsible ejaculation. Also, as a veteran, I am so very tired of teaching remedial civics. When I swore an oath to this once-great nation, there were no groups of Americans that were expressly left out of my oath. I swore to protect and defend everyone here, be you a Christian, a Muslim, a gay person, a heterosexual person, everybody. My oath said to protect and defend this country, that includes everybody, regardless of your gender as well. I know you guys probably had to swear an oath to be council members. It's for everybody, all of us. I firmly believe that sometimes politicians such as yourselves choose your religion and your beliefs over everybody else's. And then you think you have the right to force those upon everybody else in the community. Your blatant attitude of entitlement and your belief that Christianity is the superior religion and should rule this nation is laughable to me as a veteran, laughable. It's also unconstitutional. These so-called Christians that stand up and propose or endorse these idiotic resolutions are what I call some timely Christians. They're pickers and choosers, every one. If Christianity is right and must be adhered to, where can I find the resolution that would declare this city a sanctuary city for the sober? Where's that at? I don't see that. Shouldn't we change ordinances and zoning to make sure no more bars, no more filthy casinos, no more restaurants that serve alcohol be here? Where's that resolution? Can I pass that resolution? Can I write a resolution? I'm just saying. What about turning this little corner of the world into a sanctuary city for recovering gambling addicts? Let's get rid of that cigarette-smelling casino. We don't need to be the city known for gambling and alcoholism, do we? We don't want to be known for that. Maybe we can tell Bristol, Tennessee, maybe Virginia can sue them and let them know that we don't like that Speedway, lots of gambling and alcoholism going on down there. And, you know, shouldn't this also be a safe haven for slaveholders and slave owners? I mean, according to the Bible, slavery is just fine. Why, in the New Testament, 1 Peter, Chapter 2, verse 18, St. Peter says that slaves be subject to your masters with all reverence, not only to those that are good and equitable, but also to those that are perverse. I'm still appalled that this city council allowed the Family Foundation bigots to come here from Richmond to pass a resolution that pertains to only one gender and only one sin. What about men seeking Viagra and other drugs for erectile dysfunction? Isn't erectile dysfunction God's will? I don't know. What about women seeking fertility treatment? Isn't a barren womb also God's will? After all, God doesn't make any mistakes, right? In closing, I would just like to say thank you to the city council, because if you all pass this, and this really is what happens, you will have made my place of employment, Bristol's one and only officially designated abortion clinic, right here in little old Bristol, Tennessee. But I just want you to know, I'm a veteran, and I deserve the same consideration. I am your constituency. How dare you ignore me? Can't we put this to a vote? We voted on the casino, did we not? We voted on the casino. Why is it that the Family Foundation gets to come here and make rules and laws about me and my granddaughter and my daughter? How is that fair? I don't even know who the Family Foundation is. They're not from here in Bristol. That attorney that was here speaking for them is not from Bristol. This is my home. I come from Wise County. When I got out of the Army, I worked at the post office in Denver till I got skin cancer so bad, half of my face is missing, thanks to the United States Army. They didn't issue me SPF 50. And how much do you think I get to go to the VA for health care? Well, you're sorely mistaken, because I'm a woman. Listen, we women have it tough enough, and for you all to think that it's okay to tell my granddaughter that if she is violently raped, that she may not have access to safe and legal abortion care, that's disgusting to me. That is absolutely disgusting, because rich people will always have access to safe and legal abortion. My father beat my mother every day of my life, and her last pregnancy was exactly five days after Roe v. Wade became law, and she got an abortion. Had she not, she wouldn't be alive today. I am extraordinarily thankful for that, because my father would have killed her. He would have absolutely killed her. He was a member of law enforcement. We used to leave, we used to get in the car and leave, and he'd have Trooper Breen pull us over and take us back to Smith County where he was the game warden.
Ms. Rosenwing?
Good times.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that signed up for public comment is Mr. Jeff Carrico.
Thank you. I live at 512 Meadow Drive, Bristol, Virginia. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'd like to speak in favor of the pro-life, safe zone. I do agree with the former speaker that sometimes religion is not a good argument to make for public form. That's a very private matter, so I'd like to just remove the whole religious aspect a little bit from the whole situation. Whether we're pro-life or whether we're pro-choice, there's one thing that I don't think we can deny: life is involved here. There's no question about that. Life will either exist or stop as a result of whatever we vote and whatever is decided here. To think that that's not the truth, where would we...where would life come from? Did we refer to our children before they were born by name? Did we start calling them the name we'd chosen after they were born? Did we refer to them, our little fetus? Were welcoming them? No, we called them by their name far before they were born. If this city becomes an area for abortion, I think it's going to reach far, much farther than the city of Bristol, Virginia. This will be a place where states will come, thousands will come. Thousands. Can I say thousands? Life. At the very first council last week that I...or two weeks ago that I attended, one of the members said, "We've looked at a lot of issues here. Money, all of those are important." And I don't envy you, but this one transcends Democrat, Republican, whatever religion you are. It's the very basis of our existence. It's the very basis of humanity. So I implore us that our legacy not be...and I really, really don't like to say things like this, I think it's a heavy thing that I don't like doing. You didn't ask for this. I guarantee you, not a single one of you signed up saying, "I want to run for council so that I can vote on that abortion issue." That was probably the last thing, but it's come your way. And we will decide a legacy that's going to reach a long way for a long time and affect thousands of people. I think you would want your legacy to say, "I chose life." Thousands, thousands. And it'll fall to our feet. If I can do anything to speak, to influence a vote, just to make it a safe city, would you vote for good car seats? Yeah. You'd vote that. Let's make it a safe zone from the very beginning. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Carrico. The next person that signed up is Ms. Yuhas. I pronounced it right that time.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you. So Isha Yuhas, Little Wolf Run Road, out in Bristol, Virginia. And thank you. And I know you spent a lot of time in executive session looking at some very difficult legal issues. I know you have able counsel here, but if I can be of any help or any service to the council, my offer from two weeks ago stands. I've written you guys a couple of memos to take a look at, and if there's any clarifications, again, I stand by my legal work, and if I can be of any service or help to this council, I definitely want to do that. I know you have difficult issues to deal with. That's it.
Thank you so much. The next person that signed up is Ms. Catherine Elkins.
I'm Catherine Elkins. I live at 115 Graybleau Road in Bristol, Virginia. And it is hard to not stand on religious grounds. We were what we were when we were conceived. We were meant to be, and as Willie Ellis said last meeting, the Pledge of Allegiance says, "Justice for all," and that includes the unborn children. Those children do not have a choice. They were conceived, and it is within our best interest to let them come to life and to be what the good Lord wants them to be. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Elkins. The next person that signed up is Ms. Wingard.
Counsel, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Sarah Wingard, and for all but one of my 58 years, I have been a Bristol, Virginia resident. I've lived at 545 Meadow Drive. What I actually came to say is very short, but the first speaker excited a couple of comments. For a woman to have an abortion takes the choice away from the man. There might be fathers that would like to hold their child, but because of an abortion, that man has no choice. She also mentioned other avenues, the casino with gambling and alcohol. Those are adults making those choices. The unborn have no voice. So I am speaking tonight on their behalf, because the unborn cannot speak for themselves. And she mentioned rape. 1% of all abortions are performed due to rape, less than that for incest. And I don't know what the current statistic is, but it used to be 3% for the collective rape, incest, and endangerment to the mother. That is not, you know, very, very current, but I do know, just a little while back, 3% encompassed all of those. Now, for what I would like to say, I would like to share two quotes with you. The first quote is from a man named David speaking to God. "You created my inmost being. You knit me together in my mother's womb. My frame was not hidden from you when I was made in the secret place. When I was woven together in the depths of the earth, your eyes saw my unformed body. All the days ordained for me were written in your book before one of them ever came to be." If anyone is interested, that's Psalm 139, verses 13 through 16. The second quote, and I will finish, is God speaking to Jeremiah, Chapter 1, verse 5. "Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you. Before you were born, I set you apart. Please consider the unborn. They are God's children too."
Thank you, Mrs. Wingard. The next person that signed up is Roy Stanley.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate you guys taking time out to hear this. I'm a Gulf War veteran of two wars, and so I've been a citizen of Bristol, Virginia, and pay taxes for over 20 years. And I would like...I don't feel that we need another abortion clinic. I know the impact of a loss of life has to do with...that comes from war, like PTSD. Women who get abortions, I've done some research, can also feel the same way of loss of hope. Studies have shown that alcohol and drug abuse have shown that they experience depression, grief, suicidal, and incarceration and homelessness. And we already have a lot of problem with homelessness and incarceration, and people are committing laws, breaking the law. Let's see, and I feel that the abortion clinic that we have now, they don't have Apple counselors and stuff like that, so a person that went through war, that experiences these type of feelings and things, we have counselors at the VA that can help us get through this. These women don't have counselors, and they don't provide, like, contraceptives or give them a ultrasound or give the children any other, you know, give them hope that they would have, that they receive through counseling or adoption or any kind of alternatives except And also, this, I speak for all citizens. And that lady was talking about that she worked at the abortion clinic. So this is from the National Federation, 2021, of the Federation for Abortion Clinics. They released a study that shows statistics on violence and disturbances against abortion clinics have increased in stalking 600%, blockades 450%, suspicious packages 163%, invasions 129%, and assault and battery 128% on all the volunteers and people that served with the abortion clinics. It also goes on to say that they've been providing the U.S. since 1977 on the violence against abortion clinics. There have been 11 murders, 42 bombings, 196 arsons, 491 assaults, and thousands of countless incidents of criminal activities against abortion clinics. So it's really unsafe for her to, you know, to work there. And I feel if we add more abortion clinics, that this would just rise and cause a greater problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Thank you. The next person that signed up for public comment is Ms. Hanslick. Ms. Cheryl Hanslick. If she is no longer here, then we will move on. That is the last person that actually signed up for public comment for these items now, for non-agenda items. So we'll move into the next item of our regular agenda, which is the approval of a special use permit, O2 hyphen 2022, multifamily residential in a B3 district on Randolph Street. And nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Okay, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Staff has received an application from Mr. Michael Baer for a special use permit to allow multifamily residential in a B3 general business district, zoning district, for property owned by Terry Moore and Patricia Henson. Bristol City Code 50-32 lists the permitted uses for this zoning district, and multifamily is allowed only with a special use permit. Density and yard requirements for a permit allowing multifamily in a B3 would be in accordance with the R3 requirements. It's not a rezoning request. The special use permit allows for a specific use to occur without changing the zoning district. The site is property-located. I've got it up there for you, Randolph Street, Winterberry Drive, and Monroe Street. The property currently consists of 12 vacant lots and one lot with a single-family dwelling, which, if approved, would be torn down for the proposal. The proposed project is to construct approximately 30 to 35 townhouses, townhouse units on the property, depending on engineering and utility capacity. I have updated the site plan, the concept plan in your packet from the last meeting. There were some questions about having the property or having the apartments or townhouses access out onto Winterberry Drive, and I've sat down with the developer, and we've made that change, that they would only...they would no longer access out onto Winterberry Drive if approved. And it is also in the resolution, that way is a condition of the approval, if council did choose to approve their project. Joint public hearing was held October 11th between the Planning Commission and the City Council. Planning Commission recommended the special use permits to City Council for approval at its October 17, 2022, meeting by a vote of 5 to 0. The project was advertised in accordance with state... The project was advertised in accordance with state code. I do have a few comments I'd just like to touch on briefly from members of staff regarding the request. First one, our transportation planner, Melanie Fleaner, commented that a 35-unit townhouse development is expected to generate approximately 250 trips per day, per weekday, and 140 trips per weekend day. I would not consider that an issue, and I would also note that typically, commercial uses generate more traffic than residential uses. And if a commercial use that was allowed in the B3 district were to want to come there, they would just have to go through the staff approval process, wouldn't have to go through the special use permit. As far as utilities go, there are no electrical issues with the request. Phil King, who is over the water and sewer of BVU, commented that the vacant lots along Randolph and Winterberry Drive do not have sanitary sewer service at this time. The lots along Monroe Street are currently served by an eight-inch sanitary sewer line that runs along Monroe Street. The elevation of the lots is below the elevation of the sanitary sewer lines available. Therefore, a privately-owned pump station will need to be installed to provide sewer service to this area. Sanitary sewer flow from the proposed development will ultimately flow to Bristol, Tennessee sanitary sewer system. Both Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee sanitary sewer systems will need to be evaluated to ensure that the existing infrastructure is adequate capacity to start the development. The developer will be responsible for providing the proposed flows. If required, the developer will be responsible for all costs associated with increasing capacity in the BVUA and/or Bristol, Tennessee sewer system. The lots along Randolph Street are served by a six-inch water main. The lots along Monroe Street are served by an eight-inch water main. The lots along Winterberry Drive currently have no water service. The developer will be required to demonstrate that the existing BVU water system is capable of meeting the needs of the proposed development. If required, the developer will be responsible for all costs associated with increasing the water system. I have discussed this with the applicant, and he does have an engineer working on this Our Public Works Director, Jacob Chandler, commented that depending on how the property develops, private trash service may be required and will be determined during the site plan process. Our Fire Marshal, Eric Blevins, commented that hydrant locations and water flows in the area are acceptable for a multifamily group use, and it would be an acceptable use. Our Economic Development Specialist, Matt Chapman, commented, "I do not believe the proposed development will have a negative impact on property values in the area." Staff has reviewed the circumstances surrounding the application for a special use permit at the above-referenced location. Consistency with the comprehensive plan, the proposed location is in a B3 district, and the future land use plan shows a portion of this property is residential and the rest commercial. The comprehensive plan does provide flexibility in its land use plan by stating that the plan should remain flexible enough to allow for creative approaches to land development that are consistent with the policies and guidelines included in the comprehensive plan. The zoning ordinance permits this flexibility by allowing multifamily residential in a B3 with a special use permit. Under the land use category multifamily, the comprehensive plan states that, as with single-family attached uses, multifamily uses are scattered throughout the community, but should be encouraged within or near major commercial areas, corridors, or downtown. The subject property has been zoned B3 since it was annexed into the city and has yet to develop. The property is located between a lower-density residential area and a commercial one. The immediate land uses are a mix of single- and two-family uses and commercial uses. Multifamily uses can serve as a good buffer between those two existing uses. Following the evaluation of the application, staff finds the proposed use would not negatively impact the surrounding area, since multifamily is a less intense use than many of the byright uses in a B3 district. The proposal also addresses a demonstrated need in Bristol for additional housing. Staff therefore recommends the special use permit be granted. And Mr. Behr is in attendance today in case there are any specific questions.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jay. So next, we'd be looking for a motion from the council and any discussion after that.
I move for approval of the special use permit 02-22, 2022.
Go ahead and second, but I did want to have a little bit of a discussion, because a couple of issues.
Yeah, if you want to start.
All right. So, one, I'm very glad to see that you put something, that there won't be any ingress and egress off of Winterberry. I was out that way a couple of weeks ago and walked all around the property, and I would completely agree with that. When I look at the site plan that's in our packet, though, I'm concerned about the ingress and egress on Monroe, because there's two separate entrances, and they're both right across from residences. It looks to me like, while it may not be as conducive, it's easy, you could put one separate entrance right there across from Durham Street, and actually have a four-way, and just one way into the property, and then once they got in, they could turn, and it would create traffic hazards. Because to me, having two separate entrances, one that's very close to an intersection, and then yet another one, I can see some problems with ingress and egress there.
Usually, those are the types of things that are sorted out during the site plan process. As I mentioned, this is a concept plan, but I do understand, and I, you know, Mr. Behr has been very helpful, and had been very willing to work with whatever type of entrances we need to make this project go forward. So, you know, if you, I'm not sure if you're asking that we put that in there, or is it just something for us to look at?
Well, I don't know.
You're right.
Should we, I mean, I don't know if we should put it in there or not, but it's definitely a concern that I have looking at this. You know, otherwise, I appreciate the work on this. I think the development's sorely needed in our community. It's just that ingress and egress around that area. And sitting here looking at that site plan, it would make sense to have one, instead of two entrances, one and one that actually teed up to a cross street. So I don't know if we should put it in there, or just take that under consideration.
Well, they will have to, he will have to kind of conform to the distances from intersections and all of the VDOT standards that we do require when it comes to entrances. Mr. Chandler might be able to speak a little more to that, since we don't have an engineer right now, but those are things that are usually looked at in that site plan process.
Just a quick procedural question. We had a motion to approve the special use permit. After a vote is taken, will there be, do we need to have a reading of the resolution that's in the packet?
Yeah, we do need to read that. We can do that by caption only.
Okay. Do we need to just amend the motion to have the reading by caption only, approve and reading by caption?
That'd be fine, yeah.
Okay.
So I'd like to amend my motion for reading of the resolution by caption only and approval.
I'll second that as well.
Well, if there's any other further discussion, if there's none, we do have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Lingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Now, a reading of the resolution by caption only.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia, granting a special use permit, SU number 02-2022, for tax map parcels 23-9-4-1 through 23-9-4-11, and 33-3-4-12 through 13, multifamily residential in a B3 zoning district.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next item, which is approval of First Amendment to Agreement for Sale, for Purchase and Sale of Real Property. And we had a few folks sign up for public comment for this item, and this is pertaining to the property located on Bonham Road. The first person that signed up is Mr. Horn, Mr. Brandon Horn.
My name is Brandon Horn. I live at 209 Crossway Road. I moved to Bristol in 2015 and saw a need for developed youth programs. Developed Bristol, Virginia Junior Bearcats. I know it doesn't mean much to anybody here, but since that time, we've used those soccer fields to practice on. There's really no other flat space in Bristol, Virginia that will provide the opportunity for the kids that we've been able to. There's a lot of impoverished kids in this community who've got meals through our program, have stayed involved, have practiced Monday, Tuesday, Thursday night from July into November. I can't really think of another place we're going to be able to take these kids if this field is taken away. Most of us can say, when we look back as kids, we were able to run the streets, run around, and do things. There's really nowhere in Bristol, Virginia, I see that we can do that right now. The only thing I would say is consider selling this property. If you do, try to find a place for these kids. I think it's a valuable asset, and since 2016, we've served over 500 kids in football and cheerleading. And while I've been out there, that's just football and cheerleading. I've probably seen another 300 to 400 kids out there practicing soccer. So there's a lot of kids that use this as their safe space, and they get out there and they get involved. The only thing I would sit here and say is just, if you do this, consider what other options that you can provide to these kids in this community.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Horn.
Mr. Horn, can I ask a quick question? This came up earlier today in conversation with council. Is that 500 kids a year you all are?
No, it's been roughly 100 to 120 kids in my program, and I know that Bristol, Tennessee, and Bristol, Virginia soccer programs both practice on that field as well. So when we're out there, that whole field, if you've ever been out there on a weeknight, that whole field is taken up from corner to corner. I think it could be made, just a personal opinion from the outside looking in, a beautiful park for these kids in this area that have actual places for them to go to. I know we have the Sugar Hollow fields and stuff, but most of the time, if you look out there, it's adults playing, it's not kids. And that's the one thing I came here for tonight, was just to stand up for these kids.
Okay.
I know I spoke with you years ago when I came to get the contract with the city over using the football field. I've always been about helping out where I can. Matter of fact, I went to Ukraine and made it, delivered supplies. I'm also a veteran, I'll throw that out there, too. And while we're sitting here talking about choice, you had no choice to sign up for the draft when you were 18. But just throwing that out there, just think about what you can do. If you guys can come up with another area, albeit said, I'm good with it. I'm getting ready to step down from this program and move back towards Tennessee myself, but there are people wanting to carry this program forward, and I just want them to have that. They're not here tonight, I am. I'm going to fight for these kids at the end. Just think about, if you do it, where can we send them? Here, look around for the flat space that will provide that opportunity for 120, 150 kids, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday night.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Horn.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much. The next person that signed up for public comment is Ms. Jackie Knopflin.
Hi, Jackie Knopflin, 143 MacArthur Circle, Mr. Mayor, to the council, to the city manager, his staff. I signed up to talk about the economic and the development, and the community development that we need desperately. Of course, the young gentleman prior spoke about what I had spoke about some years ago when we had made mention of doing something with that property when someone wanted to develop it. I believe that we saw that Sugar Hollow, where they play soccer now, the high school does, is large enough, more than large enough, and has feasible parking as well. As I noticed, that is my neighborhood, as a matter of fact, is my backyard. And as you turn the corner there at the red light, you know, the cars are all parked somewhat illegally on the side of the roads and things of that nature, to, you know, take care of the kids that are there. So I think that we found that Sugar Hollow would be a good spot. I don't know what Parks and Recreation is doing as far as over at the fields. There's so much need, wanting to be done with the girls and the boys and so forth, that nature. Someone may need to sit down at the table and discuss that. But I am for whatever the developer wants to do. As Chairwoman of the IDA Board, not that this will come to us, but I would like to say this would be wonderful for development, especially if it's apartments or something of that nature. I had asked a question, too, to Mr. Diedrich, if, will we know exactly what the owner is going to do with the apartment? And he explained the difference between finding the, or changing the ordinance or whatever, because it's a manufactured area. I didn't, another thing, too, and this is off of that script, and please excuse me if I'm out of order, but I'm not read yet. I've listened to people talk, and I even went to a prayer thing in the park, where I thought that we were literally going to be praying for our city, and it turned out to be a political type of rally, that I wasn't invited to, but I invited myself, you know, I'm good for that. But I noticed that when people come here and they speak to you, and they offer their help and things of that nature, I felt a little something on the inside, when our own city manager plus the attorney is being paid with my little tax dollars money to take care of these situations and bring back to you, that you, someone would say from the council that they want to hear what someone else has to say as far as that's concerned. Now, that's fine, Danny, to listen to what someone has to say, but I wouldn't disregard where my money is going to. I just want to make a point there as well. Nobody wants to see this happen in our city. You all know I voted against the casino. There wasn't a whole lot of people on my side at that time, but I voted against the casino camp. I went and ate there, good food, you know, but I was against it, and I still am, you know, and it's my own personal reason. And I'm not going to throw God in the middle of it and try to challenge you all with your beliefs and things of that nature. And I'll say this, too, and this was my remarks, and I see I'm read, but I'm going to keep going, just a little bit.
Okay.
I said, sitting back there when I said, and I said, these, and excuse me, my words when I say this. I said, "These stiff-necked hypocrites," that's what Jesus called them, if we want to talk about God, "don't even speak to me in public. Don't even come and support when we're fighting for those children that are suffering right now, tonight, over there at the landfill. Don't come no other reason than other, than I feel, my personal, a political reason." I'm not here on a political reason. I feel the same way they do. I don't want to see it here either. But to come here and to throw God and to read scriptures and to do all that, to try to make people feel bad about, just simply say, "We don't want you to vote it, vote it in," or whatever, "How's it done? Listen to what the law says that we can do to protect us as far as taxpayers, whether we're going to get sued or not," and then we move from there. But I don't appreciate all the emails and things that I was getting, trying to convince me to come and see what I feel, because people were calling me names and things of that nature. But of course, they were doing it on Facebook, they weren't doing it to my face. You know what I mean? But it's sad that we have to try to threaten or intimidate the city council members, you know, over issues and things like that that we have. It's not necessary. Just simply come and state, "We don't want it in our town. We don't want it, Mr. Wingard. I don't want to see it." But we don't have to threaten people to make that happen. And thank you for letting me have that time.
Thank you, Ms. Knopflin. That's the last person that signed up for public comment, so we'll move into staff report for this item.
Counsel, before you, counsel, before you have a First Amendment to the Agreement for the Purchase of Selling Real Property, we entered into an agreement back in December of 2018 with KBM Commercial Properties for the sale of what's popularly known as the White Site. And over that time period, there were several issues that prevented the closing of the property. And since that time, we have been approached by the buyer to amend the contract, which would take out any incentives that we were promised to pay, that we'd promised to pay the developer at the time. The purchase price would be 150,000, which is what it would have been after we paid incentives back to the developer. And that the developer would not sell this property to another person for a period of 18 months. Also, it would potentially get rid of some liability that we have as related to the Falls with a piece of property that the developer developed at the Falls as well. So the developer is asking that council approve this amendment to the agreement, and he would be ready to close on this fairly quickly.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion from the council or any discussion?
And I'd also add, this has to be a, forward to pass, it has to be a four or one vote.
I move for approval of the First Amendment to the Agreement for Purchase.
Second.
So I have, you know, to get to council discussion, you have to have a motion and a second. So now we're in discussion. So I have some, I've had several concerns with this. Paramount among them, as the gentleman discussed, you know, what's going to happen to the kids that use that space currently, and, you know, just kind of brainstorming. I know that we have fields at Sugar Hollow, you know, our high school uses them. John Battle rents the soccer fields at Sugar Hollow also. Battle rents the soccer fields at Sugar Hollow also. I know that once the new school is open, I don't know if they'll have a lot of flat space, flat open space available, but I know, once the new school is open, there will be a lot of flat space behind Stonewall Jackson that could be utilized. I do think it's very important that if we're going to, if we're going to displace, you know, this many children in the community, you know, whether it be the city of Bristol, Virginia, or Bristol, Tennessee, or the county, or whatever, you know, they're using these fields. And, you know, I think it's very important that we have a, have a backup plan for where they're going to go. So, so I do have, I do have that concern. I have other concerns with the agreement itself that I've expressed individually to other council members, city manager. But I do think if this goes forward, we do need to have a laser focus on where these other, where these children are going to go, you know, in the long term.
Yeah, I'll just jump in.
I'll come in if I can.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Naev, can you hear us okay?
Yeah. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we have you.
Um, I was just gonna say, okay, I was just gonna say, I agree with the vice mayor. I've had a lot of concerns about this as well, and I've talked to a lot of people, you know, anytime I drive by there, there are teams practicing on the site. So with moving forward with this, we just need to make sure that we identify another area for these teams and all these children to practice. And I know we've been having some discussions on it, but can we make sure that we identify another area that we can recommend they can practice on?
And just to kind of follow up with, with what I was going to say, with that, I was reached out by, to by the Bristol Soccer Association. And of course, it was told to me that, you know, you can practice really on these fields here on Bottom Road anytime. I grew up playing soccer on those fields. And then the soccer association pays the city to use the fields at Sugar Hollow in the back for the games. And the concern was, well, the soccer association did not have enough money to pay to rent those fields also for practice. So I don't know if anything could be done to, to, yeah, to open up, to have more access, specifically those back fields that have the, the gate across the road there at Sugar Hollow for, for, you know, sports practices as well, not just games, but, but practices. So that, that's kind of where I'm at with that. My hope is that we'd be able to find space for everyone to, to play, for all the kids. But one concern is, and I guess kind of going back to the beginning, we've been sort of talking about this for a while, because I came aboard in November of two thousand and eighteen, and then it was in December of eighteen when we actually entered into an agreement to sell the property. And at the time, it was, the property was going to be a residential development, a multi-family residential development with a gated community, I believe, with a swimming pool and some other amenities. And, you know, at the time, we were looking at the potential tax revenue that would come in from that property and the real estate tax. And, and we also, you know, were discussing at the time that we, we may be getting a casino at the time. So we discussed, you know, we need, we do have a need for more housing, which we still do. And, you know, we discussed a little bit with the developer, kind of about the buffer area, transition, because there's some houses nearby. There's also some manufacturing nearby. So this is kind of right in the middle. It'd be kind of a transition out of residential into where the, the manufacturing areas are. But I'll tell you, though, the thing, you know, over time, you know, COVID happened, there were some issues with ability to, if sewer would be available there. So, so times have somewhat changed a little bit. And I don't know, I mean, if you asked me today, I guess, you know, we've met with the developer. But if you've asked me, you know, what is he going to do there on this property? I, I don't know if I can tell you a hundred percent. So I guess, I don't know if he's watching tonight. I didn't know if he'd be here or not. But I, I guess I just still have some more questions, more concerns. You know, it's kind of, it was something that was kind of full gung ho a few years ago, a big residential development coming. But now it's kind of, you know, we don't, we don't know if that's happening or not.
Can I ask one question? So if this is currently zoned what, Mr. Deidre?
It's zoned, it's zoned manufacturing, but it's a conditional zoning. So there's a very short list. It's, I mean, it's about thirty years old, so the list is a little outdated. So anything else would have to require a rezone.
Yeah. That, that's kind of what I thought. I mean, first, I just, you know, appreciate Mr. Horn's concern about the, the youth and the fields and everyone else on council. And I would say, you know, it's a twofold problem. One, we need to do something in the very short term to, if this passes, to deal with those fields. But I think it's really a longer term issue that we need to look at. And we have opportunity after the first of the year with the comprehensive plan, talking about sports, parks, recreational facilities. How do we grow those? How do we further develop Sugar Hollow? I've had a lot of people talk about that, about different potential up there. So I think, you know, longer term, you can look at that. But in the short run, you know, the, finding a space for the youth, I think there's probably ample space. Again, you know, to be honest, if you're just practicing soccer, I don't see why you can't use the, one of the outfield in the softball field when they're, maybe not during the spring when they're playing, but during the summer or the fall, they're not using. Those fields sit empty. I mean, you could play in outfield. When we were kids, we played football, anything out in the outfield of the, of the field. We didn't necessarily have to have a specific field to play on. If it was level and didn't have a bunch of rocks in it, we thought it was good enough to get out there and play. So, so anyway, that, I do think something needs to be done, definitely in the short term. In terms of the, the property and what you were talking about, Mr. Mayor, of the development, and, you know, kind of over the last couple of years, things have changed. COVID changes a lot of things. But I know this is a property that in my time on council, we have talked about and had multiple people look at and want to develop and come. So I'm glad to see something finally get this far and come to development, because the property was originally meant to be for economic development. That's why it was zoned the way it was. And, you know, I think to finally get this far is, it's good, because it's taken a lot of things, and not just with this developer, but other potential developers. I've sat in a lot of meetings, listened to a lot of different things over the years. So I'm glad to see this finally get this far, and hopefully what will have a development that will benefit the residents of the city.
Well, if there's no further discussion, we do have a motion in a second to approve the amendment to the agreement of the sale. So clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
No.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farner?
No. The next item is the supplemental budget appropriation, totally nine hundred sixty five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
And city manager, this is a request to appropriate additional funds to the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget. The first portion consists of fire and the sheriff's department. They did receive some additional monies above what was budgeted. That consists of some reimbursements and some donations. Those total a little over fifteen thousand dollars for those two departments. In addition, we have need for additional legal fees for the city attorney's budget, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. In the solid waste fund, we have additional need for landfill temperature monitoring for eighty thousand dollars, and then flare performance testing for twenty thousand, making a total of a hundred thousand for the solid waste fund. Also, in this appropriation, you will see the transfer from the general fund to cover the solid waste appropriation. You will also see a sister item to an item that you approved at the October twenty-fifth meeting to allow for the general fund to transfer that four hundred thousand from the last meeting to the solid waste fund to, to handle the amendment passed at your last meeting. So that would be our request, and we recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're looking for a motion from the council.
I move for approval of the supplemental appropriation for nine hundred sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars is presented.
Second.
Okay. We do have a motion in a second. Is there any council discussion?
So the four hundred thousand, we approved the appropriation within the solid waste fund, but not the transfer to the solid waste fund.
This handles the transfer to the solid waste fund from general fund.
If there's no further discussion, we do have a motion in a second. So clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Farner?
Yes. The next item is our quarterly financial update for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
About a week and a half ago, we gave an update to the finance committee. So we're pleased to be able to give you the quarterly update tonight on the financial situation with the city. So this presentation would cover the first three months of the fiscal year. That period ended September thirtieth. So the first slide gives you an overview of the general fund, the solid waste fund and the transit fund. On the general fund side, you can see that through the first three months of the year, revenues are at nineteen percent. And, you know, obviously, three months of the year is twenty-five percent of the year. That would indicate that not all of our revenues are collected on a straight-line basis. For example, your largest revenue source being property taxes, those were not billed until October. So the nineteen percent would indicate that we, we still have our largest revenue source to be collected. On the expenditure side, we've spent twenty percent of the budget through three months. We currently sit at a deficit of about one and a half million dollars. But again, we will start to collect those tax dollars for the property taxes. And you'll start seeing those in October, and they'll really ramp up in November. Solid waste fund, you see that we've collected eighteen percent of our annual budget, and we've expended right at twenty-five percent of the annual budget. We currently sit at a deficit of six hundred nineteen thousand dollars. And as you know, we're continuing to bring back budget appropriations as we need monies to handle the landfill monitoring and so forth. On the transit fund, this is by far, you know, this is funded by federal monies. And you can see that we have collected twenty percent of the budgeted revenues, and we've spent seventeen percent. Those revenues, keep in mind, these are all on a cash basis. So some of those revenues came in from the prior year. So the transit fund is, is in good shape. I will remind you that the December fifth deadline for property taxes is right around the corner. So that's a good reminder for folks who are receiving their property taxes. I mentioned that was our largest revenue source. It represents about a third of the revenues. So it's a very important source. So the last two, two funds I'll cover here are the two capital project funds. The first one is locally funded. In the current year budget, you did appropriate six hundred thirty thousand dollars to cover those locally funded projects. Most of those are equipment items for the police department, the sheriff's department, fleet management, some fire equipment, and then some building maintenance. You can see that we've spent two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars of that. You will see a transfer in. We've not yet booked the transfer in from the general fund to cover this. So don't be alarmed by the negative two hundred thirty-five thousand. These are definitely covered by the general fund. On the capital project funds that are funded by state and federal sources, you can see that we've collected one percent of our budget, and we've spent about one percent of our budget. That would actually be one and a half percent if I had not rounded that on the expenditure side. Obviously, on these federally funded and state-funded projects, most of these are road projects. We have to spend those monies first, and then we will seek reimbursement from the funding source. So there would be some receivables associated with these. We'll expect these to, to be showing breakeven by year end. So moving to the general fund and diving just a little bit deeper, you can see that sixteen percent of our revenues from local sources has been collected through the first three months, twenty-six percent from the Commonwealth, and then twenty-three percent from the federal government. So we're right on target with our state and federal revenues. Again, on the local side, you'll see that turnaround as we get those property taxes in. Total revenues, we've collected nineteen percent of our budget. This slide will show you to date what percentage breakdown between state, local, and federal revenues are. We're currently fifty-eight percent on local, thirty-four percent on the state. That in, that does include the TBA receipts, and then eight percent on federal. The budget for those is sixty-eight percent local. Again, you're going to see that, that turnaround as the property tax collections commence. As far as the targeted revenue, what this does is it takes a straight-line approach to the revenues. Like I said, they, they do not necessarily get collected on a straight-line basis, but this does give you a good picture of what twenty-five percent of each of these budgeted items would be and where we currently stand. As far as local sales and use tax, you can see that we're, we're looking very strong in that category. We're actually right on target with budget and actually with prior year on local sales tax. We're looking very strong. Other areas, the lodging taxes are looking strong, as well as the restaurant meal tax. Taxes on recreation and wheels, that's a small item, but still it's looking strong. Interestingly, we were talking about this at the finance committee meeting, the cigarette tax is showing weakness. So those are down, those are trending down. The next slide, I added a look at where we are versus last fiscal year. So the first three months of the year compared to the first three months last year. And there you can see the eighteen percent growth in local sales and use tax. Again, these are all on a cash basis. You can see we're up on the consumer utility tax, that by far, the local sales and use tax is showing the greatest growth, greatest strength. Again, you can see the reduction in the cigarette tax collections. I wouldn't be too concerned about the restaurant meal tax. Those, compared to budget, they're trending very well to budget. But in looking at the budget, it was a conservative budget in some of these areas, which is, is a good position to be in. On the admission tax, I did look ahead to October. We do have a larger seat in October. So you'll see that admission tax turnaround. Now for the graphs and charts, this is a six-year look at the trend on growth for just this three-month period. So this would compare September year-to-date for fiscal years eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and then the current. So you can see that first set of bars is the local sales and use tax. Obviously, it's going in the right direction. We'd like to see those bars go up. The restaurant meal tax, although it looks fairly flat to last year, is still trending in a good direction. It's, it's still looking strong. It's looking really good to budget. The lodging tax is holding its own. Communications tax continues to have small decreases from year to year. Consumers' utility tax and the electric consumption tax, you can see that, that those are relatively flat over that six-year period. Still, you know, they're, they're good, reliable revenue streams. Cigarette tax, you can see the drop there from last year. Of course, the- Of course, we have some smaller items, taxes on the recreation and wheels and the admissions tax. Like I said, admissions tax, you'll see that turnaround in October. So this graph compares where we are this current year, which would be the top line, to the three-year average. So that the long green line is the three-year average for local sales and use tax. We are looking very strongly against that three-year average on the local sales and use tax, so the local economy is still showing strong. And Councilman Hartley shared an article with us earlier that showed that the state is showing some pretty strong economic growth as far as tax collections. So we're going to keep a watch on those collections as we go through the holiday season, and hopefully, people go out and spend money locally in Bristol, Virginia, and we see those numbers continue to stay strong. The next slide is the same sort of numbers for the restaurant meals tax. You see that top line would be where we are currently. The fact that it is above that blue line is a great thing, so that blue line would be the three-year average. Restaurant meals tax is showing strong growth over the three-year average. Lodging tax, although it does show a dip, that is just the trend. Last year, it showed a dip in September. It will come back, and, you know, it'll come back strong, but it typically does dip in September, and then we'll expect that to bounce back up. So moving from revenues to expenditures on the general fund side, if you compare this to, you know, we're a fourth of the way through the year, if you kind of compare that percentage spent to the twenty-five percent, you can see several categories across the city that are under the twenty-five percent. I will mention on the non-departmental, the city's insurance is paid out of the non-departmental category, so that being at thirty-one percent is not alarming. The insurance bills pretty much have been paid for the whole year. The debt is at eleven percent, but our largest debt payments will come in January. We'll probably actually pay those in December for January. And then we've not yet made all the transfers out of the general fund that were budgeted. For example, the capital that I mentioned earlier will come out of that area. So no concerns at this point on spending in the departments for the general fund. This next slide, it's very difficult to see that very top one because it's hidden, but it says public safety within that blue bar, and they currently comprise thirty-three point three percent of the general fund expenditures. The reason that they are comprising a third of our general fund expenditures currently is that we have already made almost half of the payments for the jail authority. We do have a portion of the jail authority appropriation that will come from the ARPA funds, the second quarter payment we did make from ARPA funds. So that's not a concern, but you can see as the bars go down, the different departments and how much of the budget that they consume. Moving to solid waste, you can see that on the disposal side for revenues, we've spent twenty percent, or we've actually collected twenty percent of the budgeted revenues. You had a presentation about the amended, the amended projection, and how those revenues are trailing off to almost nothing. So we'll continue to report on the progress of these billings. We still have some mulch sales and things like that going on, but they're very, very small. Collection revenue is right at twenty-five percent, and then the non-operating revenue that is primarily transfers in from the general fund, so you'll see that. You'll see that number grow. On the expenditure side for the solid waste fund, you can see that compared to the twenty-five percent, the only category that is meeting the twenty-five percent is the debt, and that's because we've already made the majority of our, well, at least almost half of our debt payments for the year. The other debt payments will come, I believe, in January for this fund. Overall, we've spent a fourth of our budget in the solid waste fund. And again, you'll see those, you'll see the disposal expenses ramp up as we continue to have to spend those monies on the landfill. Moving on to our cash balance, we were at twenty-six point two million dollars at the end of September. That does include all of our operating funds, which would also include solid waste. That does include our reserves of one and a half million for the general fund reserve, and then the three million dollar debt reserve that you've voted to set aside at some point in time. You also can see the growth in the cash fund. Over the years, we grew from a little over seven million in twenty-seventeen to the current twenty-six point two million. Again, this is just a snapshot at the end of September, as those balances will ebb and flow throughout the year. And then this is a six-year history of how the operating cash has ebbed and flowed over this six-year period. So you can see, obviously, we're at a good position with the current year. It's pretty much flat through July, August, September. Again, you will see these grow as we get those property tax monies in. And I know that in the past that you have had updates on the files space two and three, the budgeted, and you can see the different categories of taxes that are assigned to the files space two and three. Collectively, the budget is eight hundred and, about eight hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. So far, we've collected a hundred and twenty-six thousand or fifteen percent of that total budget. These are also affected by the property taxes, so we'll continue to monitor these as those property tax monies come in. The debt that's allocated to the false projects, three point one million, and then you have three hundred fifty thousand of the revenue sharing, that I believe this is the last year for the revenue sharing. So that would show us a budgeted deficit of two point seven million, and this is very similar to last year's deficit. And the final slide in my presentation is looking at the debt service. I believe this was a slide that was requested by council at some point in time that took the twenty-seventeen, eighteen budget and treated it like a fixed amount, and then measured each year's debt service payments against that fixed amount. And you can see the increases in that fourth column, and then you can see the million-dollar reserve. And then you can see that we've allocated some, that revenue sharing money that's becoming available to help with that. And then next to the last column would be the three million dollar debt reserve that was set aside. So the school debt is included in here as well. They do pay that three hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred from the appropriation they received from us, and that debt gets paid off in twenty-twenty-seven. So that concludes my presentation. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to field those.
Well, thank you. I don't have any questions myself. I think it's good that we, you know, see those numbers compared to where we're at budgeted this year, but also, I like how you added the slide about comparing where we are versus where we were at last year. So I think that's a good way to kind of measure what's going on in the city. So, yeah. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a couple things. You know, first thing, I'll point out the good stuff, you know. You know, early on, you were showing we have positive budget variances happening in lodging and meals taxes, and, you know, I think a lot of that is due to the growth and economic development that we've had in the city over the past several months, you know, things coming to fruition. I assume those numbers will continue to grow, so it's positive to just kind of see the very first beginning hints of that. I do have a question about the big drop on admissions tax. I know you said that there was a large payment supposed to come in soon, but I know on the, on one of the bar graph slides, that there was a big drop-off from last year, so this might be a question for the city manager or anybody. What happened last year that we had so much more money in admissions tax that dropped off?
I just think it's timing, as to when certain admissions taxes were paid.
We know what it is, so basically, they'd paid it earlier last year, probably?
Evidently.
Okay.
Couple of questions. First, vice mayor, it's a good report. It's really good to see particularly our sales tax up. There's concerns about the economy and potential slowdown with different things. It looks like still chugging along, at least locally, very well. I think that's a good indicator. Two things I noticed and have a question about. One, the capital projects, and of course, sometimes those get delayed, but where a lot of them are road projects and stuff, I mean, if they're this far behind three months into the year, will those be brought to fruition during the course of the year, or more than likely, will those just be carried forward into the next fiscal year?
I think most of these projects, and Jake can probably speak to it better than I can, but I think most of these projects are going to be probably carried on over into the next fiscal year.
I mean, that's fine, because I know a lot of it's state and federal funding, so the funding's there, it's just more the timing of it. But some of these projects, we talk about year after year after year, and, you know, we vote on it, and it gets into VDOT plan, and you just wonder when it's going to actually happen, so.
With staffing issues right now, I mean, they will be delayed, probably carried over to the next year. We are still trying to get some of the projects off the ground for this year, but it's probably looking at spring or summer before you start seeing any of that, if we can get some help and get those off the ground.
Yeah, and trust me, I'm very well aware in my day job of issues with staffing and supply chain and just general inflation and with large construction projects, so I understand that. My next question is that slide towards the end about debt service, and something I've been wondering about is where so much of our debt is tied to the solid waste disposal fund, and we no longer have revenue coming in from the solid waste disposal fund, does that slide need to be revised? Because there's, it appears to me, there's a gap that's going to be, I mean, when it says we're good through twenty-twenty-seven, we're going to have a gap that we need to make up somewhere along the way, just to make up that debt.
This is combined general fund and solid waste fund. I can present those separately.
Yeah, well, I mean, I'm just, throw that out, that's something to keep in mind, that, you know, I think the way that's being presented, and again, I don't know, but I've been thinking about that, that, you know, now there's no more revenue coming in to pay for that debt, but the debt's still there, so, you know, you're going to have to make it up somewhere else, so I think it probably needs to be showed in that slide, so you don't have a false sense of security that you're on track, or as far on track. I mean, we're on track, but anyway, just a comment, something to think about.
If there's no further questions, we do, we appreciate it, and we'll move on to the next item, which is the second reading of an ordinance to create a zoning map amendment for property located on Veta Drive, Everett Street, Gate City Highway, and Andover Drive, and no one signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Yes, City of Bristol, Virginia is requesting a zoning map amendment for multiple properties on Veta Drive, Everett Street, Gate City Highway, and Andover Drive. The current zoning for these properties is R2, single and two-family residential, and OI, office institutional, and the proposed zoning district would be B3, general business district. City council approved this request on first ordinance reading at the October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two meeting by a vote of five to nothing.
Okay. All right, thank you. So we're looking for a motion from the council for the second reading of the ordinance, and it can be by full or by caption only.
I move for second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay. Is there any council discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. Now we'll have a reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Yeah, it's the long one, so give me a second. The ordinance number twenty-two hyphen seventeen, an ordinance by the city council of Bristol, Virginia, approving your request to amend the city zoning map from single and two-family residential, R2, to general business district, B3, for property described as tax map parcels. Twenty-two hyphen two hyphen one hyphen four A, five five A, six six A, seven eight eight A, nine. Twenty-two hyphen two hyphen two hyphen two A, three four five, five A, six seven, seven A, eight eight A, nine nine A, ten. Twenty-two hyphen seven hyphen one hyphen ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. Twenty-two hyphen seven hyphen two hyphen eleven and twelve. Three seventy-four hyphen one hyphen B hyphen one, two three four, five six seven eight nine, ten eleven twelve thirteen fourteen fifteen. Four one three hyphen one hyphen eighteen, twenty-four and twenty-five. Four thirteen hyphen two hyphen six hyphen two and three. Four one three hyphen five hyphen one, four one four hyphen A hyphen one, two three four, five six seven, seven A, seven B, eight nine ten. Four one four hyphen two hyphen two hyphen thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, and a request to amend the city zoning map from office and institutional, OI, to general business district, B3, for property described as a portion of tax map parcel, four one four hyphen A hyphen twelve.
You got it. Would you do it again? I'm just kidding. So now we're looking for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second for adoption. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes. The next item is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Farnum?
Yes. That's the last item of our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.